To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome. We will start the meeting and firstly we want to talk about, but we're going to talk about a lot of great things that are going on at the schools. In fact, we have a lot of representatives here, so we will celebrate that as well in a few minutes. But we have been so busy, anytime you get to the, what, how many days of school? Are we into, one team hands yet?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, sorry, almost, three, three plus hands. There's a lot of excitement, a lot of culmination of things, so we're here to celebrate that. But the first thing I want to talk about is if anybody has things that they have gone to, know about, whatever, of things that are happening in the district that they want to share and talk about, that would be great. Okay, you want to go?
Sure, I just wanted, Woodville had its 100 years celebration the other, the other night, and that was really fun. I hope a lot of people that maybe were Woodville alum or retired teachers were able to check that out. It was really interesting to see all 100 years when it displayed around the building. So thank you to the teachers and the students that helped put that together. That was a really, really cool thing.
That was a cool thing. A lot, boy, you all have lots of printed history and, and, you know, models and displays of things, so it was, it was impressive. Anybody else?
I think they had staff appreciation weeks the past few weeks, which been a lot of good, positive energy around all the schools with that.
Yeah, we're bringing more.
Lot of food?
A lot of food, yeah.
Sounds like deli sandwiches, yeah.
Um, I, I know what we're bringing, but um, yeah, when I talked to my teacher friends, they said, like, one person goes from school to school, you know, because she's a nurse, and she said, "I could eat in every building," you know, so we're gonna, we're gonna wait when, when maybe the food has died down and people aren't dropping things off as much. I also want to talk about the Nesties. It was a huge success. We sold out. It was the biggest crowd that we had, and that is a really great event because we get to honor teachers and, and staff people in our buildings, and it's, it, for those of you who have never been or were new this year, you get the feeling of about how excited teachers are, you know, that you notice that they're honored, so. And I think we may have a couple of honorees that are in our building right now, so I wanted to congratulate all those teachers. I also want to talk about, we're going to talk a lot about test scores and governor scholars, and we'll, we'll get more into detail when you're, when John is up here introducing people, but we've had a really good spring, so. Anybody else?
I don't, won't take his thunder, or Sidney's thunder, along the, the lines of test scores and performance, our national merit and semi-national merit finalist and nominations. That's amazing. We've had Envirethon, qualified for state competition, which is coming up next week. We've got We the People, gotta give a shout out to my former, former class that competed in Nationals and had a top unit with Unit Five, so those are some of the many things going on.
I got to attend the Caffees last night. That was very cool. Oh my gosh.
Was it amazing?
Standing. Probably, if you haven't been, even if you're not associated with the theater program, you should at least go as an event at some point, because it's about the closest thing you'll get is an Academy Award for local theater, and they run it like that, and it's very professional. Highlands had two students that were emcees out of the four, and so they were leading the program, and they had a big night. They cleaned up with Best Musical and Actor and Actress, and, and yes, we've got some of them in the room back here, and Song, and it was really cool. And they just seen, we had a massive group of Highlands parents there, and just seeing the way those kids support each other through all that, and when they're onstage, and there's probably a cool video of the kids afterwards on the stairs, and you hear a lot of birds, birds, birds. So if you haven't seen that video on Facebook, it's pretty cool.
And they looked very, they looked fancy, too. They were really fancy.
It is, it is a dress up event.
It is.
They're in, they're in dresses.
People were asking them what they were wearing.
And Hudson, Pennsies, and our, our best actor had on this nice red suit that went well from Sweeney Todd.
It was very, going with the theme.
And, yeah, the actress had the, a red dress on, and so they went with the theme. It was very cool. And so, fun night. It's a long fun night.
Lot of energy and excitement in that room for sure. At one point, I, I messaged and said, "I think I might have some hearing loss with all the, all the screaming from, from the student and participants," and the district said, "Well, it just means you're getting older." Lot of really good stuff going on, and we will celebrate significantly more students who are actually in, in our space as governor scholars and FCC LA and STLP and a whole variety of, of people performing at super high levels. And so, congratulations on, on all of the good things happening around the Nest. Also, best of luck as we finalize our AP testing this week, and we're about to go into state testing very, very soon, so a lot of good stuff.
All right, anybody else have anything? Okay, then we'll move on to John Darnell. Are you going to come up and talk about ACT perfect scores first?
Yeah, we had three students in our March administration for the juniors that received a perfect 36 composite score. I want to say total, we had 30 over 30, but these three students received that perfect 36, Bradley Gronick, Connor Weeby, and Jack Wilson.
They're going to ask you a ton of questions.
Congratulations. I used to know what the percentage is. It's a really low, single-digit percentage in the whole country that gets a perfect score, so it's a really small company.
It's like less than twice.
Yes, it is. It's a really small amount, so that's huge. It's also something that you just don't wake up junior year and go, "I'm going to take the ACT and I'm going to be a perfect score." You have to take really hard courses to get ready for it, so we applaud you. Congratulations. That's very, very cool, very cool. I think, do you all have something you want to talk about? Tell us.
Yes, do you have any? I mean, now that you've conquered ACT, I mean, life begins.
I'd like to hear, so, you know, you've taken the ACT at least probably two, three times by now, right? So, you know, not to give private information, but how, give me a big score jump. Where did you jump from to 36?
I jumped a lot in math initially, like, a lot of it was like, I hadn't taken those geometry and like early algebra classes in a, a little bit, so I had to like refresh on those skills. And some stuff that helped me do that was like, we had flex time sessions with our teachers that like they targeted specific stuff, like they like asked us what we needed, and we were able to like prep for this.
That's great.
Yeah, but some of you guys hadn't taken that stuff since like eighth grade.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I'd like to hear that you're working on things in flex like that, so that's awesome. Well, congratulations. Okay, the next thing, the governor scholars.
Yeah, so there are three governor schools in Kentucky, Governor Scholars Program, Governor School for Entrepreneurs, and also the Governor's School for the Arts. So this year, I believe, we have 21 students total that were accepted. I don't know historically if that's the highest. I think in good years, we've had 20, 21, 22, but we have 10 students who were accepted into the Governor Scholars Program, five-week intensive at three different universities. It's a residential program around Kentucky, so Owen Borden, Henry Campbell, Belle Fisher, Bradley Gronick, Ryan Gronick, Samantha Heilman, Sophia Shear, Campbell Smith, Connor Weeby, and Jackson Wilson are the GSP students.
Just let some people over there, some people over here, so they can still like, that's what I'm saying.
The one that looks like you wish your 12. Okay. See, I did not get a 36 in the 18. I did infer that.
Mr. Darnell, what I will say is, probably, I want to be a little careful here, but, but you said you're not sure if it's, it's the largest in history. I can only go back a couple decades, but I can say that this is probably, this is our largest in, in our, in our history. In fact, this year, you're given slots of, of applicants that you can have, and we petitioned for additional because our, our pool was so strong. So, so while we had nine allocated to us, we asked for additional in all 10 that we sent. We're, we're recognized. You guys are top of the top. Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm really excited for you all. It's one of the programs, and I'm sure you've had friends and brothers and sisters that have gone, but it's one of the programs that when kids come back, it's kind of life-changing. I mean, you get to kind of, you know, witness what school's going to be, and, you know, learning for learning's sake, and meet all different kinds of people, so I'm excited for you. So congratulations.
Do you guys already know your campuses? Who, what campuses are there? I taught eons ago on Center's campus.
Bellman, there's not Bellman this year.
Okay, so I can, I'm excited because I know Center wasn't in a rotation for a while, so I'm glad they're back in. Shout out to trans.
Well, and also, there's a huge history at Highlands when it comes to faculty, like, Ms. Greo was there for several years, Mr. Jewett was campus director. I was a scholar in O1, I was faculty and administrator for six years after that. Ms. Forgy was there for several years, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of people affiliated with Highlands who didn't just go as scholars, they went as faculty members, which is also a huge recognition for them to be selected to teach there, too, so.
Well, congratulations.
And Mr. Darnell will have, I'm going to give him all the T-shirts, so.
You all get two.
Some of you may get more than one. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have Governor's School for the Arts, GSP, or I'm sorry, GSA. You know, there's a video that goes along with that, and there's also in-person auditions that take place. So we have five students who will be representing us, some of them who were recognized for the Caffees for musical theater, but we have Paul McDonald, who is in Woodwinds, Evan Stewart, Musical Theater, Noah Huber, instrumental music, specifically strings, Eva Sarah Kasanis, vocal music, and Ashton Willis in Film and Photography.
We have questions.
So, do you know, do you know where you're going for schools?
We're all going to UK.
All UK, okay.
Is that where they do all the GSA, the arts students? Yeah, and I'm interested in any foreigners because I do have a student I want to apply for that.
Did you get any sleep last night, or was it like straight?
Got a little over four hours going into my calc exam.
An AP exam, morning session AP exam. Wow, it's like you see those people in the Good Morning America where they're like, "I've been all night at the Oscars," but you got to go to an AP exam.
Well, I like that it was calculus, so you've got both sides of your brain working. That's very cool.
So are you guys interested in these areas? Are these more hobbies, or maybe career pursuits, things you want to, to go on beyond?
Possibly a career, but definitely always a hobby.
Yeah, which is great.
Definitely a career.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I originally applied for both vocal music and theater, and I got accepted in a boat, but they assigned me theater. But if I were to go into something like in the arts as a career, it would most likely be towards vocal music as compared to theater, but.
You're right. I'm just, I'm just a multi-therapist.
He said he freshened up this morning for calc by giving himself the closest shave he ever got.
That would be a large fall.
Oh, yeah.
Well, awesome. That's great.
Congratulations, guys.
Last governor school is for entrepreneurs. When we announced this, they usually send, last year it was a box, but this year it was an envelope, and so they come into a room and they get opened an envelope that says you're in, more or less. And so this is also one of those things to where there's a video. I'm sure they'd love to give you a 15-second elevator pitch about their video showing entrepreneurship that each one of them submitted. So Nate Rinson, Eli Back, Ryan Tool, Isaiah White, Lily Cleveland, and John Extracamp for GSE.
So while you're getting your certificates, and so we, we don't have videos, but just give us, what was your pitch?
Mine was just about like the stuff I've learned and the skills I've acquired, which is more like programming and web development, and I shared some of the, some of the stuff I worked on over the years.
You showed some of that in your report, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mine was, well, I had three words. I can't remember them all, but I know one of them was perseverance. And then I, I connected it to biking. I have a, like a little bit of a tennis lesson business. And then it was editing on computer software and using a laser engraver.
Well, I showed my grit by showing like I worked as an welder last summer. And then I also showed videos of me playing guitar at restaurants to show like my confidence. And then I also showed my 3D printing company to show my entrepreneurial spirit, so.
Oh, Renaissance.
For my video, I sort of formatted it around my adaptability and persistence. I sort of related that to how, you know, I've been going to the gym consistently over the past five months, and I also sort of related back to my internship that I took on this semester for my dual credit entrepreneurship class.
What was your internship?
It was at Potomac School.
Oh, nice.
So I danced. So I did like a, it was called costumes for calls, so I did a collective costumes. I don't know if it's like similar to that, and, and plan on donating those to somewhere local, you know, that need, because costumes can be pretty expensive for dance.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was like.
So, yeah, and then just kind of talked about like things I do on a day-to-day basis, like I like cheer and dance and.
So I essentially, I'm the owner and operator of a lawn care company that I've been developing the past four years, and so I sort of paused like my day in the life of being a lawn care operator by like taking the leaf blow off my back and, and introducing myself to the camera. Then I sort of turned my room into like an office and talked about last year's profits and how I expanded in the off-season and things that I've acquired or sort of invested into my company to better, so.
This is a fairly. I hear all this stuff and I'm like, "What have I done with my life?"
This is a fairly new program. I'm thinking in the last maybe five years, five years. Where in Northern are you? Yeah. I mean, this is a backbone of America, small businesses, so, and it's a whole different mindset from going in and doing, you know, a big program or working with a big company. So I love this because it does kind of key into something else. I mean, I think it's wonderful that you've got your own lawn care business, but it just makes you think in a different way. So congratulations, very cool.
Don't lose the spirit, right?
No.
I think it was this time last year when we were talking about this, and Brad Fennell said he loves winning state championships, and he doesn't just want to win them in sports, he wants to win them in everything. Because I want to say last year, we recognized total, this was probably about the same number, 30-ish. So the next three are some of our career technical ed, associative programs, and they have their state competitions. And so the first one is our TSA students, our technology students, and our state winners are Ian Kirshenbaum in Promotional Graphics, Dash Mackey, Kayden Schroder, and Connor Weeby in Engineering Design.
I don't know. Connor might need to like just set up shop or. I know, trying to do this, okay.
I feel like I recognize there were people up here last year for this. Yes, that's what, that I was looking. I think, I, I think I looked at some familiar faces, so congratulations. Congratulations.
A lot of responsibility.
I know, I know. I think you can handle it.
I'll try, I'll try.
Can you tell us real briefly about your projects?
So, our project was to prevent nuclear terror with the prompt, and pretty much, the, the best way we thought to do it, which we thought would be to reduce high-level nuclear waste, so we found certain reactors that are next-generation reactors and tried to fix a problem that was related to them. So we used a molten salt reactor, which is different from a normal reactor because it replaces the coolant and fuel with a molten salt, which is pretty much just melted ions, sodium chloride, that type of stuff.
I was thinking that.
And, and the main issue with these molten salt reactors is that the reactor components greatly get worn down because of all the ions that are created in the molten salt. So we decided to introduce a sort of redox rod, which was like an expendable material that we would push through the reactor while it was running, so that all the wear would go onto the redox rod instead of going onto the reactor itself, which would prolong life and make it more economically feasible.
So, you guys couldn't have had too much knowledge on nuclear reactors prior to doing this, did you?
No.
So a lot of research and work, yeah.
I'll have to blanket knowledge that it was, the, the prompt was really open, and mostly, like, there were some people at our school who also attempted the, the design task, but it was, it was a pretty public, it was a pretty well-known consensus that everyone was going to take the, the route of preventing like, like making a bunker or something, something to prevent from a, from a nuclear attack. So Kayden suggested that we take an alternate route of doing something more diplomatic and trying to protect or, or engineer a new solution to an already existing nuclear reactor.
That's awesome.
It went out, one that had some, some pros and then a few cons, and then fixed a con.
Good, good for you guys.
I actually liked the hat on. I, I was in a different group that did engineering design, and our group tried to do a bunker, and it did not work out very well. But luckily, a different thing. I've always enjoyed doodling, so I was on like PowerPoint, making funny little like slides, and I saw promotional graphics was kind of like that, so I decided to give it a shot, make. And at regionals, I, when I got my rubric pack, it was kind of meh, they, so, so I realized I needed to try harder, and then I spent a bunch of time revising it for the state and doing a prompt there, which I put a lot of heart and soul into, and it paid off. I did not think I'd win, but.
I mean, that's a lot of design thinking, right? It's kind of like you do all the wrong ways, or you take your feedback and act on that to figure out how you're actually going to solve the issue.
So are any of you seniors?
Yeah, we're all.
Okay, you're all seniors? Okay, so what, what are the seniors? What, what plans do you have?
I'm going to go, I'm already committed. I'm watching me and Kayden are.
Awesome. Awesome.
First year engineering, but out of that, I hope to declare major in aeronaut engineering and aviation or aerospace design, and then go from there.
See, sky's the limit.
I'm going to go to Rose Woolman in, in Terre Haute, Indiana, and I'm going to try and study in electrical engineering. I'm also going to do the engineering, but mechanical engineering, so we've got three different types here.
And did you, and you guys feel like you have gotten like experience and learned what those crews are actually like through what you've done with TSA or your coursework at Highlands?
Yeah, I have.
Because I think a lot of times people are like, "Yeah, I'm going to do engineering," but, you know.
So Connor, are you working for your team, working on your team for next year?
Yeah. He, he, he's going to take a little break. Yeah, he's going to take a little break.
Well, thank you, guys. Congratulations. I'm, I'm really excited.
And then, just real quick from Kayden, we just got word at the tail end of last week, at Purdue, you, in the past, he was a national merit semifinalist, a national merit finalist, and they announced that he received the National Merit Scholarship to attend. Our STLP Student Technology Leadership Project state winners in documentary film, Emma Barton, Emerson Fraley, Emma Dorr, Travis Botel, and Lydia Potte in the book trailer.
So the documentary film, you guys want to speak to that real quickly?
We made a documentary over Beverly Hills Supper Club and the tragic night that was 1977, May, and all the lives that were lost. We were fortunate enough to speak to Kentucky historian, Miss Amanda Higgins, and a local hero of ours, Ed Harper, who was a firefighter that night, and he told us about his experiences and all the tragic events that happened. We also spoke to a Kentucky, or a UK professor who was natural fire investigator that night, so he kind of talked about the disputed mentions of what happened that night and everything. So it was amazing.
Yeah.
So you're learning a lot of rich histories about Fort Myers.
How true, is there any potential truth in the theory of accelerant that was used like on the, I listened to a podcast and now I know everything.
Well, there's a lot of theories, of course, because you know how that was big in those, you know, seventies and stuff, but he said no. I guess I brought it up a couple times, and he was like, you know, trying to get some stuff out of them, but he said, "No, it was an electrical fire and due to, you know, we didn't have that great planning when, you know, and it was very compact in there, so electrical fire happened, curtains got on fire, it, you know, ran all over the Supper Club, so."
Lydia?
Yeah, tell us about your project.
Honestly, it was in broadcasting class. It was one of the very first videos we did, and she told us, to kind of get a feel of the program that we use to create videos, Premiere Pro, she was, she said, "Everyone make a book trailer," and honestly, out of all the videos I made, my book trailer is probably one of my least favorite because I was still getting the feel of the program.
Right, it was one of the first ones.
Yeah. I wasn't really sure what I was doing, and then around the time when STLP like competitions came around, she was just like, "Oh, why don't you submit it?" And I didn't really think it would get that far and then got first place.
Awesome. Congratulations. Okay, Erin, are you coming up next?
Oh, you're. Yeah, I'll do it.
You're going to do it? Oh, you thought John was comfortable, you would continue.
We had our FCC LA State Conference in March, and we had three of our members who placed first, and they were going to compete at, in Denver, Colorado. Kathleen Price, who is our senior, she won in event management. Annie Bauer, who is a sophomore, she did nutrition and wellness, and then Michael Wagner, who is from the middle school chapter, he won for career investigation.
So Kathleen, how did I work with event management? You have to sort of put on an event?
Yeah, so the event that I did was for the Womacking Parade, myself, Louis Wagner. I'd created that, and we created a fundraiser within that to raise around $1,500 for Hurricane Emery, and then I was at, my family is, we have family and property in Fort Myers, so I actually got to go and aid in that in early December along with the donation money for that, and then I kind of created my presentation for them.
And a senior, right?
Yes.
School?
I will be, I will be going to the University of Louisville to send political science as possible criminality, and I received a Mitch McConnell scholarship, so I will be a McConnell scholar next year.
Congratulations, that's great. That's great.
Nutrition and wellness.
Yeah, I need to know that.
My project was, I had to pick a person, come up with four goals, four, four concerns, and make a meal plan in accurate. and make a meal plan and exercise plan for three weeks. And we had to track her meal plan.
Yeah, that's a best part of what I could use. What about you, Michael?
Um, I did career investigation and I investigated photography. And there, I had to do a, um, I had to say a speech in the project about, about what it does and what you can do, do all that, like the.
Do you think I might like to do something like that? Maybe?
I, probably, maybe.
Yeah, you possibly would. Fair enough, sixth grade, he's got.
And these last two groups are really great examples of seeing how our secondary programs are working together to create pathways that build student interest and excellence and state champions from an early age. And you may have it, your blood, Michael.
Actically predisposed. We're still looking for another family consumer scientist.
Yes, we are, anyone knows anyone.
Somebody knows someone. I know, so I'm hoping your meal plans and things, you got two more years to, you know, bring her along for family consumer.
Right, yeah. Straight into the box.
That's right. Well, congratulations. Okay, the next is the Journalism Conference Kentucky Representative, Beth Rube Baker.
Um, so I'm really honored to be able to talk a little bit about Junior Tristan Collins. He was selected as the Kentucky representative for the Al Newhart, who is the founder of US Today, excuse me, Free Spirit and Journalism Conference. Um, just to give you an idea, the application process is immense, two letters of recommendation, multiple essays about an interest in journalism and being a free spirit, and also has to do his tran, go through his transcript as well. And they said they had two hundred applicants from the state of Kentucky this year. And he was selected amongst those applicants because he exemplified not only an interest in journalism, but what they consider a free spirit. And I could go on talking about his qualifications for that and how he has overcome immense obstacles. But he is incredibly deserving, so he gets a full expenses paid trip this year in June to Washington DC. He gets to meet with some top-tier journalists in the field. And he also gets a one thousand dollar scholarship to the college of his choosing. And the alumni from this program have gone on to ESPN, Washington Post, USA Today, and are working in a great fields of journalism. So, he has done a great job leading our program, he serves as our editor in chief, and we are incredibly proud of him, so.
Congratulations, there aren't too many programs that are immersion, you know, like that they're, that they're letting you, you know, live, live among them, not just give a check for a scholarship, which is nice too. So, congratulations, I'm pretty excited. The more I go to Washington, I love, if you've been there since eighth grade?
I have not been.
Okay.
And I'm a history nerd and I.
People love it, people love it.
A few monuments.
I'll be checking.
Yes, yes, so congratulations. Thank you. Okay, Highlands Middle School. Erica, Erica, you gonna come? Do you want to introduce who you have here first? You just want to go ahead with the video? You want to introduce your people? Do you want to introduce your students first, or do you want me to just pull up the presentation? Okay. They'll introduce themselves.
Hello. Hello. Marshall, you are doing that play with eight balls and you in a smaller target ball. The goal of the game is to win points by getting your ball closer to the target than you are playing with this was perfect for the classmates and was a great game to play with others. Everyone enjoyed this and had amazing time.
The goals of the club are to make new friends and be more social, make meaningful connections, include everyone, increase sports skill development, and getting competition experience.
Unified Club is a unique school-based club that is designed to empower youth with and without intellectual disabilities to promote social justice through a variety of athletic, social, and recreational projects and activities.
One day, Mary's School More Inclusive was with our inclusion day. The Unified Leaders Club cast out bracelets and had everyone sign a big banner that was our pledge to be inclusive. We gave everyone who signed a bracelet. One of our favorite parts is seeing just how many people came up to sign our ban, to, to our stand and sign the banner.
When you're advancing, then you have to be precise. That way, turn it off. I'm going to have to play the video and then when I.
Game one, two. On Wednesday, Marshall, she can send a banner at lunch, we're pledging to be inclusive. Is this because we make you friends?
We treat everybody like we expect.
To the side.
Yep, there you go. I think we read that one at the very beginning about what Bachi.
Yeah, I think you were trying to like, get us excited. Very good. You have to click one more time, that's until we give the black box, there we go.
A part of a fun program where everyone is included and no one is left out, well, unified might be the right thing for you. Everyone groups up and it's to play fun games without worrying about winning. Let's take a look at some people who have been a part of this program and see what it's all about.
We just, it's fun and exciting and, um, we get to be with our friends hanging out.
My favorite thing about Bachi is that competition is just about having fun.
My favorite about Bachi is being in a positive environment, everybody being nice and.
Thanks, my Bachi, my friend.
I like to play Bachi with my friends.
If you're interested, you can sign up for Unified Club on Wednesday for flex and see what it's all about. Hope to see you there, Bluebirds. On March twenty-first, we decided to spread awareness about Down Syndrome. We encouraged everyone to wear crazy socks because fun fact, the twenty-first chromosome looks like a sock. We also had everybody color a pair of socks during advisory and hung them up on the lockers for all of our friends to see.
Twenty-first is National Down Syndrome Awareness Day. Down Syndrome is when a person has an extra chromosome. People without Down Syndrome have forty-six chromosomes, but people who have Down Syndrome have forty-seven chromosomes because most of the time they have an extra copy of the twenty-first chromosome. That's why we celebrate National Down Syndrome Day on March twenty-first. Today, we wore crazy socks to celebrate. We wear crazy socks, the twenty-first chromosome looks like a sock. You also get a piece of paper to color your own crazy socks and hang them up around school. So, let's see you rock your socks. On April twenty-eighth, we wanted to celebrate Autism Awareness Day. We lit the school up blue in the middle school by having everyone wear blue. We also put blue lights in the entrance and even made blue marks to decorate the school. We also asked students to submit random acts of kindness. A few random acts of kindness that Bluebirds participated in was inviting people to sit alone during groups, smiling in the hallway, helping teachers, helping friends with homework, holding the door, and et cetera. Now, this month is Autism Awareness Month. Autism is a group of developmental disabilities that can cause significant social, communication, and behavioral challenges. Sometimes, when people have autism, the different parts of their brain communicate to each other differently than someone without autism's brain would. A lot of time, people with autism have really good memories. People with autism are also really good at getting the small details and making things pretty perfect. To help us celebrate awareness and celebrate, wear blue this Friday. Now, let's ask some of our friends how they liked the club. How did you like the club? Did you like it? What was your favorite part about it? Do I go to the microphone or do I just be right there? What is your favorite part about it, Emma?
The Bachi ball.
Glenda, what was your favorite part about Bachi ball?
Playing with the friends. You. You are a Bachi.
So, these are some pictures of you guys playing Bachi. For us on Bachi. Is that a picture? I was gonna say, I know just, I recognize that.
Knew it was serious when they gave me a tape measure.
I'm pretty sure Jack was saying his favorite thing was his buddy, I think it's Eli. Is that what he said? No?
I suppose Jagger.
School name with his buddies, just saying it from down here.
Oh, Jagger, is Jagger a favorite of Jack? I saw the one on the floor, so I'll have to talk to him. Yeah, can we maybe hear everyone's name? And like a grade or something you like doing at school, maybe?
My name's Kaylee, I'm in eighth grade and my favorite part about school is hanging out with my friends.
My name's Sarah, I'm in eighth grade and my favorite part about school is, um, probably pure tutoring.
My name, I'm third grade and I'm sixth grade and I like to like, with my friends.
My name's Kendall, I'm in eighth grade, my favorite is like seeing my friends at school.
Noticing a thing.
My name's Hannah and I'm in seventh grade and my favorite thing about, uh, school is hanging out with my friends in my classes.
My name is Livvy, I'm in eighth grade and my favorite thing about school is probably after Thursday to play Bachi.
We have some other friends who are just a little shy right now. They're not normally shy, but you know, they, they just prefer to hang back.
Okay, can you tell us their names?
Yeah, Jack Barlow and Mason Lane are back here.
Nice to meet you all. So, you all that are learning or have learned to play Bachi, are you playing at home too with your families? Emma, you have a couple of sisters, are you better at Bachi than they are?
Yeah.
I know. She's gonna get up there and show them. I know. You'll be the ones on vacation that people will want to play with on the beach because you know how to play Bachi. Anybody else have questions? I just think this is super cool, like Mr. Robinson mentioned.
Bachi.
Yes. Some of the things that are different pathways, because we've heard from a lot of the elementary schools, they've talked about like Bachi and some of the inclusion activities. And it's great to see that continuing on at the middle school. And then I'm excited because we have a lot of eighth graders, maybe they can keep that rolling and, and take some of that too into the high school and help grow it there, so I think that's really awesome. And become teachers. Yeah, you notice my. And I have T-shirts for all our friends. Susan has some T-shirts for you all. So much greatness today, it's been, it's awesome.
Great job in the presentation, it's hard to get in front of the big group, you did a nice job.
Yeah, I did, yes, we're gonna be playing Bachi with the club, so.
Well, thank you, we will give people kind of chances to exit if they want to, and then we will do the community forum next. Okay, we are in the community forum, um, section of our meeting, and I'll just kind of read what the ground rules are for that. The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about a variety of topics including issues for future consideration. Since the topics raised may not be issues listed and advertised on the public agenda, the community forum is not intended to be a setting for dialogue with the board. Direct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel for future response. Answered briefly if a matter of procedure or tabled as they may be future agenda items. Speakers who've registered at the reception area are like, are asked to identify themselves, state their reason for addressing the board. Please address the board education through whole, through the chairperson rather than individual members. And we also ask, um, that questions or comments pertaining to an individual, that being a student, employee, or community member cannot be discussed in open meetings. So, we have four people, um, and we'd like to give you a few minutes to, to state what you, um, want to talk about and, um, then we'll, we'll proceed from there. So, I have four, the first one that was given me was Toby Barlin, so you want to come up first?
I appreciate the chance to be here tonight, again, like some of you, I was at the Caffees last night. It's really inspiring to see kind of the best of the school and the district being represented and from all over the city. And it's, it's inspiring to come here and hear all the stuff that gets celebrated at the end of the school year. At the same time, I've, I've been here in the past, you guys aren't going to be surprised by what I'm going to say. Um, but I can tell you that all the hard work those kids got, that put into Sweeney Todd and put into this theater program isn't possible without a number of those kids who are among the LGBTQ population who is targeted by legislation in Kentucky. That program has been amazing for my kids and my family. I'm sure it's been that way for lots of other families. But I've heard from multiple parents in the last month since I was here and spoke about the fact that they appreciate that I've been here so that they hear at least one voice coming from this room, um, in support of, uh, their trans kids or their gay kids or their kids who aren't LGBTQ but who appreciate those who are. You know, those kids brought a lot of honor and a lot of respect to our school and our district last night. And I'm again, I don't know exactly how it's gonna happen. I'm not a legal expert. I don't know everything about these laws. But I'm asking the district, the board somehow find a way to bring honor and dignity and respect to these kids who, who bring so much to our district.
Thank you. I'm gonna speak on my behalf as a, as a former counselor and a person who's been in this building or this, this district since nineteen eighty-eight. Personally, and this board takes it very seriously that we're on a journey with all these kids, every, every child, you know, a kid that's good at math, not at math and theater. And so I, I want you to, um, and the teachers are on that journey with, with the, with the students as well. And so, um, I want you to know that we, um, take that very seriously. So thank you for, for bringing that up, so. Okay, um, we have two wrestling, um, people. So John.
We're gonna wrestle each other?
I was gonna say, who has the mat?
I got the better knees.
John did answer if I wanted to. I said, no.
You are not. So we have, um, two groups. One is, is John, is it Hazerans?
Yep, that's mine.
Okay. Rob, yeah, I'm sorry. Rob Pinkston and then Dakota Riley. You all wanna together? And then Emily, do you wanna speak with them or do you wanna speak separately?
I'll speak separately.
That's good.
I just wanna say thank you guys hired me three years ago to start a wrestling team. And we have a wrestling team. This is our team. Just wanna show you, so you see, yeah, that's your team. Thirty-three kids last year, nine girls, um, and the rest forgot, sorry, but that is. And there, she's got some. That's your wrestling team. Now, things have changed a lot and this is more of an informative thing because you guys have been supportive the whole way. It's not a problem with asking you guys for things, but I want you guys to be a little more knowledgeable before you make choices. And one of them is, girls wrestling has been sanctioned in the state of Kentucky, which changes everything. Uh, in the past three years, I've had, I've had up to four girls on my varsity team that beat guys, that have wrestled varsity. This year, the girls will not be able to wrestle guys. They can't. So they're pretty much off my team. They have to have their own team per KHSAA rules. That's one of the big changes is that no longer will I be able to utilize them on the mat. They have to do their own thing. They have to wrestle girls, which is good, right? It's good. It's gonna help a lot because it's really hard for a seventh and eighth grader to show up to practice and have to wrestle guys, a girl. It's really tough on them. And we've lost a lot of girls because they're just feeling uncomfortable. They're not comfortable wrestling guys. So that's another big thing that'll change. Girls wrestle girls, they'll have their own coach. Trust me, it'll be a lot better, a lot better in the long run. I wanted to let you know that we have our girls, uh, we started with four the first year, uh, we had eight the second year, and we had eleven last year. Uh, we had six girls that were on the all-state, nominated for all-state team, uh, and girl scholarships were, it's the fastest growing sport in America is women wrestling. And there is a ton of scholarships. And I mean, that's true, that's, they're a ton. If you wrestle and you're a girl, you're pretty much gonna get a scholarship somewhere because it's such a need right now for that. Other than that, uh, we got tournaments. Oh, tournament conflicts, of course, here's the biggest thing that, here's the biggest, one of the biggest reasons we need a coach is when we go to a tournament, we have to, we have to, a coach has to be in the corner. If you're not in the corner, you forfeit the match, okay? And when you're in a tournament, like the biggest tournament we had, well, it was Nationals with fifty-eight matches, but we've been in tournaments where there's six mats. And when you got six mats going, a lot of times you have two or three wrestlers at the same time, okay? And that's really hard because you've got, you need to have coaches to be there. And to have girls and guys, it's gonna be even harder because they're gonna be, girls are gonna be in one place, guys are gonna be in the other. It's gonna, it's just gonna multiply the work. So it's gonna be, and this is just to let you guys know, if you will, we're requesting you guys put a head coach on the ballot as soon as possible so we can begin to think how we're gonna do it. And I have Dakota Riley volunteered last year. He did a great job with the girls. He's a great coach. He's been coaching with me for years. Uh, we coached at NKU together and of course, you might know Rob Pinkston. I could probably be even wrestling actually, truth be told, but, but I couldn't be Rob. I could not be Rob, alright? So that's, that's a trade-off there, I guess, on that. The boys, we see, and, and I would like to honestly, I think it's, I wanna concentrate on the boys. I wanna build a winning team. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna state champion. That's why I coach. It's, it's to win because I wanna win a state championship. And we're gonna do that. And I think it's gonna help me focus on what I need to focus on just the guys. I love the girls, don't get me wrong. Girls, this is the first time I've ever coached girls and they are better than guys. Because they listen. They listen and they do what you tell them to do. It's unbelievable. But you hired me to be the boys' coach, so I'm gonna be the guys' coach, but, uh, the other, the other thing I put on the sheet that you guys got is, the only school I know of so far that has already approved, uh, a head coach is Walton Verona and they, those are their salaries. I just gave you some numbers, just throw them out there. I talked to John Walton last night. They approved it, I think, two weeks ago. Um, and then I gave you some numbers. The singlets, that's a little, there should be a one in front of that file. It should be fifteen hundred, so you can make that change. Other than that, I just put some numbers down that I think we're gonna have, uh, traveling, it's gonna be tough finding tournaments for all girls the first year, but I think we did, we'll do better than we did last year. And these girls are, they're awesome. They're tough. They really are great. And I'm excited for that.
It's not hard for us to find girls' tournaments. It's hard for us to get in early enough so we can get into girls' tournaments.
Well, yeah, exactly. They're so full, so quick. Or we'll be going to Ohio, Indiana, wherever we can go to get the tournaments, but, and then we got a, a schedule here that, you know, could change, could not. But we, just to show you guys that we do have matches already that are coming up. Uh, and if you need anything from us, the only thing we forgot was our contact information. But I'm sure you guys can find that. If you need to ask questions, just call us. You guys.
If you have questions, contact me.
Yeah, contact, yeah. She's our HR person. She helps a lot. And you guys have been awesome. I just thank you so much for everything you've done. There's never been a need at all. The mats, the singlets, the parents are awesome. I mean, honestly, at my age, I didn't really think I'd be coaching, but because you have such great kids, and I don't mean good, I mean great kids. They work really hard. I mean, really hard. And that, that's very exciting because that makes me believe that we will have a state championship team because they work so, and the parents are so supportive. I just asked and they're on it. So thank you guys for everything. Hopefully this will help you guys out. I don't know if you have questions, Rob?
I'll just connect to you, bowling points. I just, I think I got, we got something really special at the beginning, something really special here because, uh, I think John forgot to mention that two of our girls were state places at the tournament, which was a thirty-two woman bracket. Um, and then the ones that didn't place also posted a positive record. I also wanna call out two that, you know, it's, it's a rapidly growing sport. It wasn't sanctioned until this year, but we have not the, not only the largest girls' team in northern Kentucky, but largest north of Harrison County, Kentucky and San Antonio. If you were even take like a percentage of like our Highlands Girls Wrestling Team and compare it to the total participants, the girls in the state, like we're at the upward curve of that, you know? Hopefully we wanna continue to ride that growth, right? So, uh, definitely grateful for the support and, uh, yeah, just wanted to throw those two tidbits in there.
I think as much as anything, we just wanna say thank you. We recognize that you recognize the growth that we've had and the success that we've had because of the support you've given us. So as much as anything, the first three rows here are primarily the wrestlers, their families, and we just wanted to say thank you, you know? We know that you've gotta watch and see what the KHSAA says as far as things go, but, we understand that this assistant wrestling coaching position, the way it's labeled, is really the, the forerunner for the head coach. And Coach is right, there's no way in the world that one head coach can do both the boys and the girls team. So we thank you for your input.
And we, we're trying to stay ahead of the curve, so I gave you some names. Of course, hiring is, no, it's way outside of my cut of wheels, so I don't hire, but we do have two great coaches already and it would be nice to have a girl on staff. That's why Natalie, our HR slash whatever, whatever, whatever. Dot, dot, dot.
Another rename.
Dot, dot, dot. Um, she'll be there for the girls because I think it's real important that we do have a girl coach on staff, uh, as well as guys. So those names are just names of coaches that we have. We have a great coaching staff. I'm very blessed with the coaches I have, so thank you. Do y'all ask questions? Do you have questions?
I was gonna say, it's, it's not easy to start a program and you guys have built it real quick and it's been really exciting and, uh, a lot of positive stuff from it. So, you know, we're definitely, wanna thank you for all the hard work that all of you guys have put in and it's been exciting to see the, uh, the program go so quickly like it has and that's not easy to do, so.
Thank you very much.
The events are great. The meet that I attended at Highlands, it's really, this coming season, you should go. It's, it is something.
We already have two scheduled for next year. Okay.
It's something. I, I do have a question though. Um, so tonight we got on the agenda to approve the assistant coach position with the intent, I think, to make that potentially a head coach, once we know more about the, the girls' season.
Yes, Brian said that earlier. He said, he said because of our numbers, we were gonna add a coach anyway. So it didn't really matter where we were gonna put them, so that worked out.
So is that kinda work, that set process to approve that one tonight with the, is that okay?
Yes, with the hopes of having a head coach.
So, so the day after the, uh, the KHSAA sanctioned a, a separate state championship, which is really how they, they sort of worded it, this, this group said, well, we need to have some more coaches. And, and, and so that, that has been the intent and the desire from the start and, and Jamie Flaherty's actually gonna present this in a little bit, has been working with the school administration and to, to try to find out exactly what that looks like. So to my knowledge, we still have weight classes that are outlined for, for the, uh, for the girls' divisions. Is that new? Do they have that?
They, they have weight classes that are outlined. It's currently, we're at twelve weight classes. So if that continues from what we've been last year, the boys have fourteen weight classes, the girls have twelve. So hopefully that should continue into this year's with twelve weight classes.
The, the prohibition of, of girls wrestling boys is, is new information to me, even, even this evening.
That'll help a lot.
I feel bad for Walton. Like, how's that, how's that young lady?
She's a queen.
She is a good wrestler. She's very, very good.
She's getting a lot.
Yeah, she's very, very good.
So, so yeah, there, there is cool, uh, full intent. Uh, Ms. Flaherty has, has been very active in it and, and really this, this position, so some of the, the misunderstanding was that we were adding a girls' assistant. This is an assistant to the wrestling program with the intent of, of, of let's, uh, let's recognize the expansion and the growth and, and as soon as we, we have some of those other questions answered, we can make some moves.
You guys are always ahead of the curve. You guys do well. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you.
All right, Emily, you gonna bring this home?
I love speaking on a podium, so I'm so happy. I was told earlier that I only get two minutes, but John had way longer than two minutes.
I had nine minutes. Three, three, three.
So hello, my name is Emily Kristen Hyland. I've gone to Highlands since I was in middle school and I joined the wrestling team my sophomore year. Currently, I'm a captain on the wrestling team as a junior and this is the beginning of my third year. This past year, female wrestling has gone sanctioned in Kentucky, one of the academy wrestling. My girlfriend and team and I have wrestled guys and needless to say, I would rather wrestle a girl rather than a guy because it's a leveling plate, a leveled playing field. We all know that males are genetically born stronger and while girls can beat guys because it's happened before, it's not as easy. I'm thankful to everyone, especially the parents, for their help in supporting the girls' program. As the team continues to grow, the girls and I would greatly preach a girls' head coach. Title nine from KHSAA says that girls should get their own head coach. I understand that it would make sense to have one head coach for both boys and the girls' team, but because of the number difference, the girls feel as if we aren't important. Now, is this really the case or the purpose? No, not necessarily, but what it does look like to other teams that we compete against or to the parents of the girls and the girls themselves. I just ask that the girls on the wrestling team at Highlands get their own head coach as female wrestling increases in numbers. It's really stressful to go into a tournament that we've had this year where it's been a boys' tournament and a girls' tournament on the same day. And the girls, the boys' team is definitely bigger, so they get more coaches, but then it struggles for the girls' team when we're running around and we have coaches like my lovely mom who has gotten up on her wrestling knowledge, but at the beginning of the season, it was most certainly a struggle where me and my co-captain Angelica on the female team, um, were really struggling where we had to teach the girls. My partners and the entire girls' team, I mean, it's really become a family and with girls wrestling increasing, I mean, it's definitely a sport to look out for. Not to mention that we are one of the most up and coming teams in northern Kentucky for the girls. So, yeah, that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
How many girls did you have this next year?
Ooh, that's a great question. We had nine, eleven, a bunch of the numbers due to injuries. We had this one really good girl, but then she was actually wrestling and she got an injury in her shoulder. And our state day was amazing. Now, I don't necessarily remember it. This year, I got the blackout spats award. It's bad. I'm not supposed to say that.
Is that where the ship?
It's, it's, um, needless to say, watching girls, watching these girls wrestle and watching these girls grow over the year has been one of the best experiences in my high school life. High school, whatever. And so I would just really enjoy a female head coach. I know that we had one my first season and I would just like to have these girls, that give them the opportunity to have one. Now, being able to find one, that's a whole different conversation, I believe, for a later point, but I hope I'm coming back and be one.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. But yeah, it's gonna be alright.
So Emily, is this when I start, um, posting your arm about being a teacher?
Um, I would honestly love to be a teacher. I'm not gonna lie to you, but I know the pay grade.
Well, thank you. Um, thank you for being so passionate. The thing that I, that we have watched is, um, one of the things in schools is we want people to find their people, you know? Kids to find their people. And if it's in the arts, if it's in theater, if it's in, and I know a lot of times you had kids who had never been on, in another group or another sport. So, um, the value added has been huge and, and, you know, you, I don't know, you're, you're, it's, you know, people wanna come and join you, so, um, I applaud, so thank you very much.
He begs us wanna build new field hats.
Okay, and then our last one is, um, Myrna E.
Wow, follow that up, right? So, um, it's been brought to my attention and I know it's been addressed, that there was a book that has popped up, um, The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, that has some questionable material in it. And, um, talking with some other parents, apparently this book has been part of the curriculum for a while. Uh, my son graduated last year, um, and when talking about it at home, he's like, oh yeah, Mom, I read that in ninth grade. I'm like, he did? He goes, yeah, this is what the book's about. It wasn't that bad. So hold on. So I pulled out the book and read him those, um, questionable excerpts and he's like, oh yeah, I remembered that. Yeah, that's not good. That's not good. And I said, is this appropriate for ninth graders? He said, no, it's not. So, go back about a year ago, I think it was April of last year, um, when we were talking about Portrait of a Graduate, there was a section talking about resources and I had brought up to the board about guidelines on those resources. And I believe, Anne, you said that there was, uh, that you trusted the teachers to make good decisions. Um, and I reminded that we have had some rogue teachers in the past that, you know, could pass a criminal background check. But still, we need these guidelines on these resources. Back in December, I challenged sixteen books that were found to be on the Go Full It website that's catalogued of your library books. And, uh, Mr. Gay and I had a conversation and he said those books are no longer in the library. Said, well, according to the website, they're still in the library. So he was working on cleaning that up, but there are some books that are not showing up in the catalog that are in your library. So we've gotta figure out a way to connect that. Also, you know, parents need that transparency of what's being, um, taught in the classroom. And that's part of what, um, Senate Bill Five that just got passed in legislation, the obscene books, um, law bill will be coming down. I believe, here in the next couple of weeks, Katie E. will, I guess, pull out the policies of, of how those books are gonna be challenged. I've spent a lot of time up in Frankfurt this session with SB five along with SB one-fifty. There's a lot of misinformation with SB one-fifty and just to clarify, I'm not gonna read you the law or anything. There's a lot of misinformation with SB 150, and just to clarify, I'm not gonna read you the law or anything like that, but it's to protect girls from guys entering the locker room, and that parents have that transparency of what's going on with their children, to prevent children from getting on puberty blockers. And, you know, just like with the wrestling team, girls should be wrestling girls, boys can wrestle boys. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are gonna move into the action items, so if anybody, community forum, if you wanna go, you may. I know. You don't wanna know about...
Like, I know I'm next, I just don't know the order.
Yeah, I got, I got, I need tech support.
You're all on the internet. That's why I'm glad to bring everything to a crashing halt. All the fun's over, Jerry's up there.
All right. Looks like, one of the final times for Johnson Elementary replacement. As far as the new school piece of that puzzle, we are asking for approval of a BG Five final closeout document for the new school. Okay, so this will be the last time I will talk about the new school project, because we close it tonight. There's still a few steps. We're kinda waiting on KDE for the temporary classrooms, but we'll get that done. So we have presented, or we have input the data. The BG Five basically matches exactly to BG One that you approved last month, and it's just saying to KDE that we've agreed that this project is done, we've paid all the bills, this is the money we spent, that document actually shows that we have three cents left over.
Wow.
And so we were pretty much right on the money. So we're asking for approval of BG Five closeout document.
Okay, questions or...?
I guess that at least we get to feel there's some, we're closing a chapter.
Yes.
He's toying with us.
I know.
Three cents doesn't mean you have to bring a magnet.
I need a motion for the approval of the BG Five final closeout document for the new school portion of the Johnson replacement project. All those in favor?
I feel like Julie or Jeff.
I know.
Because you guys have been through it.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right.
Okay, and the second thing I have tonight is the guaranteed energy savings contract. The mechanical contractor, Pat Caniford-Briggs, has been doing a lot of work. We've gotten a lot done that should really help us feel really confident in our timelines, both at the high school and middle school, in terms of the overall project. We will be, as soon as school's out, shutting down the middle school system, and the level of work in that project will ramp up drastically at the middle school. We're having a pre-construction meeting the week of the 22nd at the Field House with CMTA and all of the trades that will be involved in that. We do have a pay application to ask you to approve, but in addition to that, I'd like to report since this project is a little different, and we do have the POs for the material that we are buying directly. We did pay $221,457.08 toward those POs, so we've paid off almost 50%. That is all equipment that has either arrived, installed, or is in the hands of the contractors. So in addition, the lighting contractor is completing the lighting retrofits at Woodville, at Central Office, at 250 for Memorial, and they are close to being done at the Field House, with the exception of very high spaces. They're gonna do all those at once when they can rent lift, so like the Woodville gym's not quite done, and some of the Field House is not done in the turf area.
I noticed the lighting in the school board office, I mean, in the board office, and it's noticeable.
Yes.
Impressive, so.
And saving money.
Yes.
Yes. So we approving, because you said the equipment was 200 and... That's what we paid directly on purchase orders. So we paid invoices sent to us by contractors and approved by CMTA for material that we paid directly to, that way we don't pay taxes on it. Right. This is money to CMTA for their work, as well as the labor by the mechanical contractors. It's just one of the ways these type of projects help save us money. Sure. So the pay application number two is in the amount of $197,070.31 for payment to CMTA.
I need a motion for the approval of pay application number two to CMTA Incorporated in the amount of $197,070.31 for the guaranteed energy savings contract program. Motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, Jerry. Okay, the comprehensive improvement plan. So Keith, you're up.
All right, good evening, guys. I'm here tonight to talk to you, as I have multiple times throughout the year, to talk about the seed dip. And so we've done this multiple times throughout the year, where we've talked about different phases, and we're presently in phase four. Other phases that we've done to this point, we've done the needs assessment, continuous improvement, superintendent assurances. And tonight, what I'm here to report out to you is one component of phase four. I'll come back up later to talk about another component of phase four. But this first phase, I want to talk to you tonight, is about our continuation of learning plan. This has been done for years. It has a nastier term, which is called NTI, which came up more privately in the times of COVID. However, districts have always had to have a continuation of learning plan in case of an emergency, whether it be short-term and long-term. And what this phase four diagnostic does, it goes through a series of assurances that you, as a school board and the superintendent, states that we're gonna assure that continuation of learning is gonna take place, should we have to have a departure from school for a short and/or long period of time. And what these assurances state is that no students will be negatively impacted in terms of penalized for not being able to attend school. We have a digital component to that. We have a learning management system that will take place. Any student that has a program service plan or an IEP will continue to receive services through non-traditional instruction, and that we need to approve this. Continuing on with our assurances just states that teachers will be trained and will know how to work through that. And I would say, living in the digital environment that we have for the number of years that we have had, our district was really set up well to be able to execute this plan pretty flawlessly. And, you know, should we ever be, for us, in a position where we need to do NTI, I feel like we will be able to execute that plan really well. And so really, tonight, just reporting out that this is part of phase four, that if we needed to go out of school again for a short or long-term plan, that board has, knows that this is part of our phase four diagnostic.
All right, any questions? We've been doing this for a few years. I need a motion for the approval of the continuation of learning plan diagnostic.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay, Jamie, are you next?
It's already been a popular topic, but I do have a couple of things to add. I'm coming to you tonight to discuss wrestling, and it would be with the intentions to ask for an assistant coach for the team itself. In February, it was that girls wrestling was sanctioned at the KHSAA level, and that since then, there has been a notification from NFHS, so the National Federation of High School Sports, so the national level for classes and tournaments. But its true impact in the state of Kentucky has not been given to the schools or to leadership. And so KHSAA is still working. I did talk to a representative from KHSAA that spoke to the logistics and the challenges that they're facing. And so we hope that that would be coming within this next month. If that's the intentions of them to give us that information, then I could be back next month asking for an additional request, as I mentioned earlier, for a head coach. So we would like to move further right now with an assistant, so that they can go on and get an individual hired and in the works for that, and then we will determine next steps when new information at the school, at the district level, become available from KHSAA.
Questions?
I mean, are we thinking, are we feeling like we need an assistant plus the separate women's head coach, or girls' head coach, or what's our class area?
Well, that's, the other question is that I can't give you exactly how many students are going to actually participate next year either. So I would formally request that and give you all of that information at the same time.
Okay.
To make an informed decision.
Yes, I did ask, would they rather us wait and do this all together? And I don't wanna speak, I mean, if John wants to speak further, but we did talk through that. He would like us to move forward with the assistant at this time, if possible.
And just, again, for emphasis, this isn't, this isn't a specific assistant for a separate program. This is to add additional support for a growing wrestling program that is gonna have new opportunities ahead. There's just a, the level of separation in tournaments, the level of, is still, is still just unknown. So I do believe it'll, it'll, it'll be there. It's not without precedent that you have cross-country swimming, places, you know, programs that have students compete at the same place at the same time, have one head coach with a couple other assistants. I don't wanna anticipate wrestling being the case for this one. Given that information.
Correct. We just have not been informed, so we don't have any of those guidelines as of yet.
And frankly, Jamie even asked, should we wait until we, for both? And Alabama said, "No, let's get out there and get some people."
Does it give you kind of a head start, so you'll sort of identify?
And it could be a possibility that they hire an assistant and then very quickly say, "Okay, I want my assistant to be my head coach," so that they're attracting an individual or multiple individuals for a program.
It's smart to do that, too, I think. You mentioned that the school's already hired a coach for their girls' program, and so being on top of this and being ready, because I think, based on what I saw at the event I went to, there's gonna be a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of hiring in this area, probably not a lot of resources right away. So it'd be great to be ahead of it.
It seems like they need it now, right? I mean, the way you're...
They need the assistant now, for sure.
Yeah.
That'll give them a start. They probably are wanting to need a...
Girls' coach.
We could, I mean, if we feel good next month, we could do it next month. I don't know that we're there today.
Yeah.
We're still waiting to hear about the structuring, like how the competitions are gonna be, if they're gonna be on side, and to the point of what they said, you've got other coach in the corner of the mat, so we've gotta increase the number of coaches first, and then we have, we need to explore, when we know a little more, the head coach piece.
Correct.
I'll do it in a partway.
I don't think that they are.
Because I, I think probably now that it's sanctioned, they're gonna see an increase, and it's just, you know, not having the, you know, girls are prohibited from wrestling boys. I think that would bring out some more female athletes.
And that's new information today, I'm not sure.
Right, there was a release, I believe it was early May, that talked about classes. It's more of a, it's a national level guidance piece, it's not a specific state guidance piece.
All right, so I need a motion for the approval to establish an additional position for wrestling assistant coach. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
I'll keep my eye on it.
Thank you for staying on that. Tentative budget?
Yep, they're, the creation of our budget for a school year is a nine-month process, as we've talked about.
Slight gestation for...
So in January, we get very theoretical numbers. This year, I feel like we were able to get pretty close in January, probably closer than you typically may get. So the second level of budgeting comes in May, and that is in the form of a tentative budget. And I'll tell you, in our district, we work very hard to make our tentative budget to be very close to what will be our working budget, which will get approved in September. So the budget that we're proposing, that is summarized up on the screen, and I'll point out just a couple minor changes from the draft budget. For all intents and purposes, without radical differences or changes between now and September, will become our working budget. Work with Andy very regularly to make sure we have good numbers from the time that we look at needs assessments, going into the draft budget, to what some of the actuals are closer in May. So some of the differences that you'll see, and the far-left column is the current working budget that we're living under. The draft budget is the one I mentioned in January, so I'm only gonna speak to differences between what you approved in January and today. One, on the revenue side, we do have a pleasant surprise in SEEK funding. So we'll have a bit more SEEK funding from the draft budget, and that is based on revised estimates around student enrollment and ADA projected forward. Some growth on that side. We have a positive increase in interest income, just as a result of rising interest rates. Helps on that side of it. On the expense side, we have better numbers around payroll and benefits. We've, we have a better handle on the number of retirees that have announced by the April 15th, and so you see a decrease in the expenditures for payroll and benefits. You see a slight increase in the Apple lease amount. This will be the last one that is supported through Esser funds, which was the decision that we made as a district to utilize those funds, as opposed to some districts did in terms of adding staffing and so on. The building, repair, and maintenance is a bit higher in that we need to budget for a new service truck, and we have a better handle on inflationary costs there as compared to the, as compared to the draft budget. In utilities, we did account for some inflationary costs, but we also have a decrease there as a result of some of the energy savings that we're expecting in our energy saving contract. We have an increase in the expenditure towards the general fund component of the energy saving contract. So you see that added. Under professional services, we're budgeting for an increase in our agreement with the city for SRO. For insurance, we do have an increase in insurance costs this year, and we have a better handle of what that cost is. And then we have an increase in instructional resources, now that we have a pretty good handle on the resource adoption led by Mr. Faust. And then we get a better handle on the bus that we approved back in last fall, actually. So those are the differences. There's not a significant change from what you see from the draft budget. It is an increase of about, it looks like about 156, is it right, did I do the math right? But we also have various, we have the same increase. But we also have various, we have the same increase in revenue. We balance.
Okay, questions or anything?
I think I just wanted to thank the, the, all the staff across the district for really watching expenses, being on top of it. You know, I think doing that's really helped us do some of the other things that we've been wanting to do and, you know, be creative without a massive increase in revenue. So, and then for Andy and you being on top of, you know, every step of the way. And so I think we know exactly what we can do, you know, now and next year and ten years, right?
Yeah.
And I want to thank you too, because, you know, we live in a district that is greatly supported by our, our citizens, and so we really appreciate that and we want to be good stewards of that money. So, and whenever you have a budget that's eighty percent or eighty whatever percent that goes into, you know, costs that have to be there for staffing, you have to really watch all the other enable board to work. So thank you, Brian, and thank you, Andy. I know you've worked real hard. All right, I need a motion for the approval of a tentative budget for twenty-two.
No.
No, it should be twenty-three, twenty-four.
I fixed it.
Oh, good.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, audit services?
Yeah, every, every year, we are required by law to, to engage in, in a district-wide financial audit. This year, we are making a recommendation to, to continue our contract with Barnes-Dunning and Company. We do have an increase in, in our costs this year. Some of that is, is a result of, of additional auditing that needs to take place of, of federal funds and a variety of other places. So it, so it has increased more than we would like to see. We are making a recommendation to move forward with, with these services, with the understanding that next year we'll, we'll engage in a new RFP to, just to make sure that, that it's a competitive service.
Great, questions? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the contract for audit services with Barnes-Dunning and Company LTD for twenty-two.
That's right.
It should be twenty-two, really, twenty-two, twenty-three?
It was for this school year.
Okay, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars.
I'll make a tipper.
Approve, okay, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, next is bond of treasurer.
Yeah, every, every year, we are also required to enter into bonding of, of our treasurer. And so this is, this is a very annual requirement where, where we, we bond, bond Andy.
All right, questions? All right, I need a motion for the acceptance of the bond of treasurer, Andy Remlinger, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. All right, this next one, resolution, you want to go over that?
Yep. So across the state, there has been some movement to enter into some potential litigation surrounding social media companies. There's been a rise in student anxieties, depression, a variety of, of socialills. And we've seen fifteen to seventeen school districts enter into said litigation. Our school board attorney has, has suggested that we should give strong consideration for, for also entering into, into this litigation. And so the resolution in front of you is, is to provide basically authorization to me to, to enter into signing contracts or joining the statewide litigation against some of the social media companies under the, under Ronald Johnson with, with Johnson Henley, Vaughn and Emery. So this is a, this is a firm that has initiated with Fayette County, I believe, the, the litigation itself. It, it is at no cost, so there, there are no requests for, for funds or requests for dollars to do this. I'm also, as part of this resolution, should, should the board choose to go in this direction, I, I would ask the, the opportunity to, to also leave it, should it become something that, that would require spending on behalf of the district or excessive time on behalf of, of the staff.
Questions? Okay, I need a motion for the approval of the resolution authorizing litigation against social media companies.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining due to my employment with federal courts.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next is Keith, talking about professional development.
Good evening again. So you're talking today about professional development and the plan that we have moving forward with our district. We have for years in our district had a really solid professional development plan, and we call that the PD Academy. And that is going on, plus north of twenty years, we have had that model where we try to provide a conference-like setting for our teachers so they can, you know, best, best grow professionally, both from locally and regional and state leaders. Based off a variety of feedback, we've heard that it's time for a change, both anecdotally and through survey data. And so that is tonight, I'm here to present to you our PD plan. This was done in collaboration with some of our district leaders, leadership team, principals, teachers, who have helped us to develop and craft this plan. And really what I'd like to point out to you is the major shift, the major change that you're going to see are those district professional development days. So every teacher in Fort Thomas has a contracted requirement of thirty professional development hours, and that can be broken up in a variety of ways. Historically, we've had twelve district hours, which teachers were responsible for, and then the following eighteen hours were incumbent on the teachers to capture those, whether that be through the course of school-directed and/or flexible professional development where teachers could meet their needs based on the, the job description that they had. And so the big shift I would say that happened this year is in those district-directed days. And what we've done is we've gone to a model that is more of a cadre approach or a workshop approach, really trying to meet the needs of our teachers where they can self-select offerings that met their need professionally, or doing a more of an intense deep dive workshop with the intention that we know that professional learning takes place best when it's something they can choose and something that's ongoing and sustaining that they can apply in the classroom. And that's what those cadre workshop approaches are doing. We're really creating those cadres and workshops around the themes of personalized learning and project-based learning, and also on MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. Those are two big district initiatives, not just district initiatives, but school initiatives that are taking place to support our students. And so the proposed professional development plan, we're about ninety-five percent of the way there to our finish line, right, principals?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Ninety-five percent of the way there, we're going to push that through the finish line by the end of the week. We're going to push that thing through. And so really what I'm just here to share with you is that we rolled out on May first to our teachers the new offerings, it's going to happen from a district standpoint, and then in collaboration with our building principals, really talk through what are the building level needs. At the middle and high school, they've talked about, we need to do some vertical conversations and work around curriculum and content within departments. And so that's where we're putting their area of focus. Then they'll also provide the teachers the opportunity to have six professional development hours. At the elementaries, what you see, we've got the cadre and workshop approach for the district hours in all three of our elementary schools. And then we're also going to do a deep dive, we've done social studies curriculum work, you've heard about that throughout the course of this year. We're at a point where we're already making adoption, so we're going to do a, adopt the resource, and then we'll have some time to do a deep dive and study into, all right, what are those resources, how can I best utilize in the classroom? We're also coming on the heels of where we did a resource adoption at the elementary in math. And so we would be remiss if we didn't spend some time reflecting on the implementation of that. We're going to do a math adoption here in two more years. And so this is a good opportunity for us to reflect and say, hey, was this a good resource for us? Is it meeting our needs? Is it not meeting our needs? What are the strengths? Were we coming up short? The reality is our elementary just don't get an opportunity to collaborate across three, three schools as much as we'd like. So we're really going to take advantage of this day on June the fifth to collaborate with one another, to say, hey, what are you using? How are you using this program? Is it working? Is it not? And then we're also going to talk about STAR, which I'll get to in my next presentation. But really utilizing that, getting that data, looking at that data, they've really built upon that resource. And so giving our teachers some training on what do the reports mean, what resources are available in STAR slash Renaissance. And so that's how that day is going to be broken up on June the fifth. On June the sixth, our elementary schools, they're going to work on their individual programs. So at Johnson Elementary, they're going to work on their Pillars and Pathways program, and also doing some vertical curriculum alignment and talking about their MTSS system and their structure and what they're going to do to support students. While at Moier and Woodville, they're going to be talking about their Leader in Me initiatives and what they're going to do to continue to live that out on a daily basis. And then finally, for their, for the elementaries, for their last day, there's going to be opportunities for flex. And then at Woodville, they're going to get together in early August, and they're going to talk about some building-wide initiatives that they're going to do, talk about student performances and student opportunities to demonstrate their learning. And so that is the professional development plan. I say all of that to let you know that what I just said is basically these bullet points here, all right? In a nutshell, we're going to work on personalized learning, we're going to talk about assessment planning at the high school, they're going to talk about really formal assessments, some of the assessments, creating common assessments, ensuring that the unit designs are aligned. We're going to talk about assessment literacy, personalized learning, PBL, MTSS, those are all the things that we're going to capture in our professional development plan for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Questions?
Your rollout of this, when we got a copy of what was sent to teachers, was impressive. I mean, it was very, yeah, it was very thorough and very professional. And when I look at it, I think it's walking the walk and talking the talk for professional learning plans, so I applaud that. And it seems like, you know, I've been around for a long time, and so it's evolved as it should, as it should be, and paying attention to what people want and need, so.
I think it looks great now. Talk to me in a month.
I know, I know. It looks good on paper at this point, yeah, it looks good though.
The excitement around it has been, has been good. I think people, if anything, they appreciate the intentionality and at least the action to try to do something different. So I'm hopeful that it goes well.
So the, the only other things I'll add is, is a, a lot of these elements you see is outgrowth of, of our strategic focus and strategic plan. Each of the principals are leading a, a different priority area, and, and when you look at the areas of focus for each of these priority areas and, and the ways that we measure success, it is, it is full of these topics, and, and you'll also see those in the school improvement plans as well. So, so there's alignment, there's cohesion, we're, we're working hard to move in the same direction. And then in addition to that, when, when you do job embedded professional development and you take some steps out and try to, to live personalization over a compliance model, there are some things that you have to think about.
It's a little messy.
And it needs to be messy, and that's okay.
Yeah.
Because it will be significantly better as it, as it applies to the, to the journey of that teacher. So I applaud Keith and his team for.
And I mean, that's what we say we want to do with our students, right? We should get, you know, it's, it's a heavier lift to, to do it for our teachers, but I think that's good to, to do that.
I guess what they have to share is just like what I've seen on the immediate release of that on May, some of the feedback we got from teachers is just their willingness to go out and learn more independently on their own, and kind of releasing that, the constraints of these two days and say, hey, look, go do some. My middle school's saying, hey, look, I want to do four days of science training. I've got teachers that don't want to even commit to a two-days letters training, like dozens of teachers willing to do that. And that, that's way more than the two days that we did in August. And so I think by releasing some of those barriers or releasing some of those like harsh, vast rules, what we've seen is our professionals be true professionals and wanting to demonstrate their growth. And to me, that's been pretty exciting.
Great.
That's good. Yeah.
Okay. You going STAR now?
I am. All right, so tonight, the last presentation you get to hear from me is on our STAR benchmark assessment. You may remember I spoke with you in the fall and talked about our initial data that comes back. That initial assessment, we taken the last week of August, the last, excuse me, last week, August first, week in September. And that's just some great baseline data for our students. How are we coming back? What did they retain from last year? Where was that summer slide? Where are we at, right? And tonight, what I'm proud to report on is, okay, what type of growth have we demonstrated? What type of growth have we seen throughout the course of the year? And so that's what I'll be sharing with you this evening. STAR, just as a real cap, real, real quick recap, it's a nationally normed test that we take three times a year. So we call that a universal screener. And so we do that fall, winter and spring. The fall gives us that baseline data, the winter kind of gives us a progress, progress check of where we are. And the spring, again, it's the same assessment, it's about thirty-six questions that are taken. It's an adaptive assessment, meaning the test that I get and the test that Clint get are going to be very different based off the answers that we, on how we're scoring, all right? And so it moves to meet the students where they are. What I would share is I think the easiest piece of data to kind of digest would be percentile ranks. What that talks about is the percentage of our students that are meeting proficiency. And so here you see in the fall, for example, I'll just look at Highlands Middle School, sixty-seven percent of our students were deemed proficient in the fall, whereas now we have seventy percent of our students are meeting proficiency in reading. And then you see math right next to it with seventy-two and seventy-three. And so that is a high percentage of students that are meeting proficiency. All right, you say, well, what is proficiency? So proficiency is deemed at the fortieth percentile or higher, all right? And that allows us to know that our students, that percentage of our students are meeting that proficiency mark. And you see, we've got scores that have risen, and these are schools, schools are really hitting that proficiency mark, and that's, that's a good national comparison. So that's a, the scale of that is one to ninety-nine. Obviously ninety-nine, you'd be knocking it off the top, whereas one, you have some significant area for improvement. So I see where there are numbers in the seventies, eighties and nineties there, even in some of our schools, our students are really demonstrating a high level of proficiency, and, you know, that doesn't, doesn't surprise me. This is just one measure that we use, but it is a measure that schools, where they do some goal-setting, they do some intentional conversations about. And I think when our students give it the attention that is necessary, clearly you can see that they perform really well.
Got some big-time jumps in some of these.
You do.
Yeah.
You do. And you see at the elementary there, it's grades one through five. I'll highlight kindergarten, that's a different assessment that they take, and so.
Well, and nice jumps with already pretty good starts.
Yeah.
So there's not a lot of even room to grow, so I mean, I, I think can make that impressive they start that well, and impressive that they can, can be there to grow.
Really is. I want to skip to my next slide maybe. All right, summary, here's a breakdown by grade, and so we talked about those, how did our, how did our students do? So that was comparison from fall to spring. And now we've kind of broken it out by grade level. And you can see, again, this is the same thing, the percentile rank, not so much fall to spring, but this is how they scored in the spring nationally, how did our students score? And then you can see across the grade levels, you know, Johnson Elementary first grade in math, ninety-first, ninety-first percentile students met that benchmark, right? Or were at proficiency.
And that's the kind of thing, like you were talking about, those district-wide PLC were to say, okay, hey, that grade level at that school and that grade level at that school in math, what's, what's going on there and how do we replicate it?
I think it certainly opens the door for conversation, right? It's a data point, we can look at that and say, all right, what are we doing? What's working? How are we performing? And so she's there, just across the board, our students are performing, you know, really well, and should be really proud of the work that we have happening. Conversely, when I go to reading, similar type data go across at each of the grade levels, and it's again, the percentile ranked nationally on how we're performing. And so those students are really performing at a high clip of where we're going. I think what I'd like to see there is just the, the tightness of the data. You don't have huge outliers, which I think is consistent, talks about that guaranteed viable curriculum that we're going to continue to revisit as we move through our curriculum reprocess. And so I think it's good to see that our students are, our buildings are continuing to perform at that high level.
I know you said, I think in the working board meeting, that, that, you know, those middle school numbers, you felt better about them than really what you're seeing right there and there.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to speak to that.
I do, and I'll pay you right now for some great transition dollars. This is a great segue into this report. And so growth report, right? And so I, I save this one for the end because it's probably, it's the most challenging of, of the reports to kind of get into. So I want to do my best to articulate it with you guys. And, and I do feel like with a little bit deeper dive, you do see some of those positives at the middle school, and so I'd like to speak to that. So the growth report, so SGP, student growth percentile, and then you see I have that, that third column of each of those subsets there, that talks about the percentage of students that are considered meeting expectations.[1780.54] So, if I have an SGP score of fifty, all right, that means I've met and or exceeded above that. I've exceeded those growth expectations. And so, what you'll see there, so at Highlands Middle School, yes, fifty-five percent of our students on that reading post-op was at a, that was their national percentile rank. That number of three hundred and seventy-two, that's students. So, three hundred and seventy-two students met and or exceeded that student growth percentile of fifty or higher. That's fifty-one percent of our students. And so, I feel like that is some of those good numbers. There's better numbers than maybe in the onset when you just see that fifty or fifty-seventy, you may think, oh, wow, they're really lagging behind our elementaries. I do think there's some positive momentum to pull from that from middle school. And so, that's what I was speaking to a little bit Clem at the working board meeting. Because you see, those are similarly consistent with the percentage of students at the elementary level who are meeting those growth expectations. So, I certainly think there's time in place for a deeper dive into this data and understanding it is a data point that we're looking at. But again, I think there's positives to glean from all of this data and certainly areas and opportunities for growth as well. You know, I think it's a fair question to say, look, you know, at the middle school, where do we have opportunities to grow our students? What can we do to get this up? Is it instructional? Is it a relating and the importance of the test that we need to do? Is it a curricular resource type thing? So, I think all of those questions are fair. And I think, you know, the current structure that, you know, Ms. Volpin, your middle school staff has created for that PLC opportunity certainly affords that. And so, I'm excited about the opportunities that'll happen, you know, how the middle school for them to continue to make growth just like all of our schools.
On this report, another area of emphasis is as we look at data and we dig in and you listen to some of the shifts in the conversations in some of our teams, we are going to care about where, you know, what is our percentage of proficiency? Like, there's big group numbers. And we're going to care deeply about where are we as a district and as a school in national percentile rankings as a group. But our focus has really turned to, does every individual student grow as an individual academically in terms of interest and passions, involvement and a variety of things? And so, looking at that SGP is going to, the only way you impact that is if you know where every individual student starts and then where they end over time and what kind of benefit we have from that. So, it goes under the hood a little bit more.
Which is really next level. I mean, that's what you have to do. You can, once you get to high numbers, you can do it in groups. But when you get to these high numbers, the only way you're going to do growth is just individual or knowing, you know, what, who needs what.
Yeah, and just so you know, like, so that SGP, that number is derived from the tests that are taken, right? And so, if I take a test in the fall, I take a test in the winter, I can then derive an SGP number. If I take a test in the spring and take it in the fall, I can then get that SGP number. And it's correlated against like peers. So, taking those like peers, I correlate like peers and I see, is my growth, Julie and I were in a like peer group, is my growth and Julie's growth, is it the same? Is she outperforming me? Doubt it, I'm outlacking her.
That's right.
That's how that SGP number.
I don't.
So, it is, that's really getting into the weeds, but, you know, to Brian's point, that's the necessary work that needs to happen. So, we grow up each individual child and see how are they making gains, how are they making growth?
Well, we, I want to talk about teachers because I, we really appreciate all the work they've done. I mean, when you hear things, you know, they get little, you know, this percentage, you know, nationally, this percentage is not proficient in whatever name your subject. Our teachers came every day during COVID and worked with these kids. And I appreciate that and I appreciate the continuing of working with all these kids because it doesn't just happen by happenstance.
Can I give one more? I'll just, magically it's.
They don't. And it's happening, who needs what, and your story after, who needs what, you know, so I appreciate all the work.
I don't want to neglect our youngest learners. We have the early literacy assessment in kindergarten. And that is an assessment where it's both reading and math skills combined in one, where you have STAR reading, you have STAR math, early literacy is a combination of those. So, our kindergarten students take both. Now, you can see just the growth that we're seeing district-wide. You see where our kindergarters came in and then you see where they're exiting us in the fall. And our kindergarten teachers, instructional aides, parents, students themselves, like, they're putting the work in, you know, to see, you know, some substantial gains there, which isn't surprising. And so, really proud of our teachers and our kids for posting those scores, they're really setting ourselves up. I would also, just like I say, I think we're probably seeing the efforts of this board pay off in terms of all-day kindergarten and the fact that our students can have that. So, again, really want to appreciate the board's commitment to that as I think we're going to start to see the fruits of that labor. As we start to get, you know, all-day kindergarten, however many years we're into that, we start to get our established MTSS program, we start to have curricular resources, curricular alignment, everything line up. Like, I think we're just setting ourselves to a really positive trajectory and so.
Are you seeing anything with Imagination Library? Can you, have you been able to track that with these kids that have been given books, the pre-k kids? Are we seeing different reading levels coming in or anything?
Well, I know the last brigands, they did show a higher score coming as a group. But there are comparisons over time that were similar to that. So, I couldn't pinpoint it just to the library experience, but it can only benefit having text in the hands of kids and reading with an adult at a very young age is extremely beneficial.
Yes. Well, I love that whole program of the kind of lesson plan so that it teaches the adults how to read with children. So, that carries through too, so.
Best.
All right, you're good?
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is the Tower Park discussion.
I just want to give kudos to Peggy Hughes tonight for.
She, you, for being here? Yeah, just for being you.
All the above, finding, I don't know, seven hundred and fifty shirts. Certificates and four thousand presentations, thank you so much tonight. Thank you for rocking it out. Yeah, we have attached our presentation that we shared as part of the community conversation last weekend. Bring it up, we probably won't go through it all here, but just wanted to take a chance to say how thankful I am for the number of people that came out, the conversations that we were able to have. And I know some of the board members may want to speak, you guys were all there. Thank you for being there and supporting this project and thinking of it as a community-focused project where we're really going to work to meet new opportunities and experiences for our kids. But we also want to, we want to make a big generational kind of difference in the footprint of this part of our town and our community. And we've been able to work together with the city to try to find some good designs. So, in terms of where we are, we gathered feedback from that event. We had a meeting today to talk with coaches about what their needs and like to would be in some of those spaces. We'll make some final revisions and it's very possible we'll come in June to have a discussion about can we move forward, putting a project out to bid, to know if the estimates for costs are what the actual bids end up being. So, a lot of work to do still in a concentrated period of time, but super impressed with all the people who have done quite a bit in our board here. I don't know if any of you guys want to share any comments from the presentation? Started off with a little trepidation and I really felt that there was some positive feedback and positive vibes coming from it.
I think we're in a good, we've made a lot of progress, we're in a good space. I think that it, you know, the past week between the community one today, getting the coaches' feedback, you know, we're at a, what are the final steps there to kind of finish this thing to be what we want it to be? And so, we're getting there and I think it's going down the right track.
Yeah, I think, you know, thanks to the community members that came out last week and shared. I mean, it was great to hear their feedback, you know, about specifics of the complex and their neighborhood for the folks that lived in that area. So, that was really good. And, yeah, I think, agree with Clem, you know, we're at the point now where kind of it's time to figure out what the capability is. So, I feel really good about it though. I think, you know, in terms of what we need to do is there, so, and we just need to, we're going to need to bid it out.
It's really refreshing to be at a place where the academic and instructional needs of math after the labor and efforts of the last twenty-five years of past boards and administrators and community support and focus. So, that, being able to look at extending opportunities and experiences in other places, it's pretty exciting. It's exciting to get there.
It is, lots of things going on, so, and opportunities for kids. Well, thank you, three of you, Clem and Jeff and Brian, I know you've been in the middle of all of that. So, thank you very much for doing all that. Okay, board committee updates, does anybody have any updates?
I do have an update on Hall of Fame. The class for twenty twenty-three has been announced, which I will share in a moment. And they will be recognized at the blue and white scrimmage on August eleventh. And then, I believe the official dinner award will be also later that weekend. So, the community can come out and celebrate those athletes at the blue and white scrimmage and if they so desire, attend the dinner, purchase that. The group includes, and please help me if I mess up any names, Kate Aronzen Cruz, Cruzee, all right, there I go, Tara Booth Smith, Brent Grover, Gina Gudule, Brett Hamlin, Jeff Kramer, Heather Kruger Parsons, Kim Hendry, it says here, William Schlarman, who I know is Willie, Rob Smith. And then, the team of distinction is the Highlands Girls Soccer Team of 'oh five and 'oh six. There was a lot of overlap of the athletes there. So, great group, great discussions. Thank you to the community for putting forth a lot of nominees and, you know, great group to celebrate.
Any other committees? Okay, well, I mentioned before, the breakfast committee will continue eating till the end of the year. So, I'll let you all know what that date will be, I may need some help delivering treats, so. Okay, next thing is the approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion with all the board members having had the opportunity to review and pursue any questions about all of the items contained therein approval of the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, and then, other business, is there anything other business? We've been kind of busy.
Lot of stuff.
I know. Okay, and then, we are going to go into executive session. So, I need a motion to approve to us to enter into the executive session at thirty-four, okay? Per KRS one five six five five seven six C. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.